Well, welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall. And this is the special welcome also to District 3 Elder Katie Nelson and District 5 Elder Luke Fussard. I'm going to, it is 7:30 now, I'm going to call the meeting of Milton Common Council for May 7, 2019 to order. And the first item on the agenda is the roll call.
Coon?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Fussard?
Here.
West?
Present.
Olson?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Sullivan is going to be late.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the comments from the citizens present as limited to three minutes per speaker. And sustainability is up.
Good evening, my name is Deb Sager, my address is 105 Island Drive, Madison. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Sustainability Committee and also here with a number of my colleagues. April Sustainability Committee represented my last committee meeting as I'm stepping off of the committee. It's also the last committee meeting for Chris Koenig, Joanna Richard, Kathy Olson as well. We've been longtime members of that committee. We've documented the committee's history for the new members and the soon-to-be hired Sustainability Coordinator. And we thought that some of that history was worth sharing with you here tonight at the council as well, so that you could understand what we've been working on for the last 11 years and the role that you've helped to play in that as well. So the committee actually started as an ad hoc, not a standing committee, back in June of 2008. And we had three very basic goals from that initial meeting. The first one was to create a community garden because there were no community gardens that were publicly available in Middleton. The second was to start a monthly sustainability series that we had an opportunity for the community to come together and be educated and provide input on sustainability to. And the third, kind of remarkably to me, was that we were supposed to determine whether the city should even adopt sustainability as a goal. So that kind of gives you a benchmark for where we started. The committee, the city, and the community have accomplished all of those things and a lot more in the last 11 years. And it's been my privilege to work with my fellow committee members in the council and the community as we've moved along. We hit the ground running back in '08. And by September of that year, we started offering educational events called Green Thursdays. And those featured a series of lectures and films. We ultimately ended up hosting those same events throughout the Dane County region with Monona, Madison, Fitchburg, Oregon, Mount Horeb. Really brought the community together to hear about a whole variety of topics. Everything from canning and preserving to natural burial to, I mean, really, all kinds of different things that you could learn about beekeeping, backyard chickens, socially responsible investing. And through May of 2015, we offered over 70 events related to that alone in the community. So a great accomplishment and a first goal that we really feel like we've met. Beyond that, though, we've done a lot more with community education and outreach. And I'd like to turn it over now to Deb Weitzel. She'll talk a little bit more about that.
Good evening. As she said, I'm Deb Weitzel, 6602 Whittlesey Road. I'm a new member of the committee, but I've been on the outside looking in since its inception. I taught environmental classes at Middleton High School and my students made up the majority of Green Tuesdays audiences. Since 2009, seven students have served on the Sustainability Committee, giving them valuable insight and input into the city's sustainable efforts. There have been many other community opportunities for education and outreach. The committee organized the Natural Steps Study Circles for interested residents. Green Homes and Businesses Tours in 2010 and 2012 showed how community members were implementing sustainable practices. We held a compost bin and rain barrel sale in May of 2011 in conjunction with the Madison Sale. November of 2009, we developed Middleton Trash and Recycling Guide with Alder West and the help of the City of Fitchburg. It continues to be updated by staff and is available today on the city website as resources on how to most sustainably dispose of a wide variety of items. Partnered with Focus on Energy in 2012 and 2014 on the Express Energy Efficiency Program to market free energy and water-saving devices to Middleton residents. Provided a year-long water conservation contest for community residents in 2013. Staff and committee members were invited to present on the contest at the 2013 Wisconsin Water Association Meeting. It hosted along with partners like MG&E, multiple electric and hybrid car-related educational events to encourage community members to talk with owners of those vehicles. Worked with Catalogue Choice, a national nonprofit, to encourage Middleton residents to remove themselves from mailing lists to reduce the junk mail they receive. Developed a City of Middleton Student Transportation Survey to understand student transportation patterns. Abby Atune and Chair Spencer Schumacher have presented to many organizations, conferences, and other entities around Dane County and throughout the state on the efforts of the committee and city. And hosted multiple speaker and panel events on solar energy, particularly residential solar energy in collaboration with the library, Sierra Club, and other organizations. And provided educational inserts in water bills, emailed the Sustainable Middleton Newsletter, and created social media posts to inform the public. And now Angie Carey with Community Gardens.
My name is Angie Carey and I live at 7410 Voss Parkway in Middleton. And I've been a committee member since 2008. When the committee expanded in 2008 and we began to first chart our course, we grappled with the definition of sustainability and what we might be able to accomplish. And most of our first efforts reflected this. We tried to educate the community as we educated ourselves. We sought to build a framework that would lend itself to meaningful actions and results and looked for opportunities that required little funding and a lot of hard work. And one of those first efforts was to develop a community garden. Although our first attempt to establish a garden at Lakeview Park East wasn't successful, the committee was able to act quickly when the Blatner Group offered land on Forsythia Street for a temporary garden space. And in 2009, volunteers from local businesses, including Globe University, garden enthusiasts, hard workers from the Citizens Academy, committee members and city staff helped to prepare the space and create 36 plots, all of which were filled quickly. One year later, the first permanent, city-owned, community garden space was developed on Pheasant Branch Conservancy, Bock Forest land. The Bock Community Garden is unique because it provides both garden space to Middleton residents and a nursery area for native plant cultivation, producing trees and shrubs that would be transplanted into the conservancy and aid in restoration efforts. The garden came to fruition in part because of an anonymous $10,000 donation, as well as grants from Willie Street Co-op and the Community Action Coalition and in-kind work provided by Cornerstone. Fruit and nut trees were added after the city won funding through ED's and the Fruit Tree Planting Foundation. City resident Ross Timmy designed and donated materials, including the double doors for the construction of a shed that stands in the center of the garden. And the steps leading to the garden gate were constructed by a local Eagle Scout and are flanked by a native demonstration garden. By 2011, there were 54 community garden plots, including six accessible raised beds and a children's garden. In 2013, the city also opened a 12-plot garden on school district land at the DAC on South Street. Staff and committee members have acted as a resource for others wanting to start their own gardens. While community garden work was ongoing, the goal of developing a sustainable city plan began to take shape. In 2009, we applied for a grant from Seventh Generation Systems to guide development of this plan. The green team was created, consisting of committee members and city staff who drafted the plan with Seventh Generation as a facilitator. Major public participation components in the development of the plan, including a visioning session in July 2009 where the community was invited to provide their input on the seven main components of the plan, including solid waste, water, economy, food, and fair trade, land use, transportation, energy, and public outreach and education. The plan was adopted in 2010 and established baseline data for comparison purposes. We set targets and we created an action plan. We've used the plan since its inception to identify and prioritize specific projects that move the city towards the stated goals. And in 2017, we began a review and update of the plan, including gathering new data to compare against the baseline. In 2011, with the garden up and running and the Sustainable City Plan adopted, we were able to focus more of our efforts on water conservation. The committee was instrumental in getting the residential water rate structure changed from a declining block rate to a uniform rate to encourage conservation. And in 2014, the PSC approved both residential and commercial financial incentives for water-saving toilets, commercial restaurant pre-rin spray valves, and commercial water audits. That same year, recommendations made by the Sustainability Committee to the Finance Committee and Common Council also included moving to a monthly billing cycle, changing from a level to an inclining block rate structure for residential customers, and billing multifamily as a separate fee category and moving it to a uniform rate structure. And while we haven't achieved all those goals yet, we hope to in the future. Next will be Chris Koenig.
I'm Chris Koenig and I live at 3612 Glen Lane. And I've also been a member of the Sustainability Committee since 2008. First, I want to talk about MedDrop. We started that, holding events in 2009. We held two of them and collected over 2,000 pounds of expired and unneeded medication. And due to community need, a permanent MedDrop box was added at the police station in late 2009 and is now available in the lobby 24/7, 365 days a year. The MedDrop in Middleton is one of the busiest collection points in the county. Since October of 2018, which is less than one year, we have collected 51 boxes of medications for a combined weight of 1,190 pounds. Next is Clean and Green Middleton, dealing with waste and recycling. The task force began in October 2008. And I should say that I saw that the City of Chicago did it, so I thought, why not Middleton? So Chicago can do it, we can do it too, right? And the committee agreed. And we held the first one in May of 2009 at the high school. The initial Clean and Green included drop-off options for St. Vinnie's, durable medical equipment, eyeglasses, and CFL bulbs, as well as educational information from Focus on Energy and MG&E, and also rain barrel sales. The spring event was so popular that a fall equivalent was added in 2009. And over time, additional organizations were identified to help collect construction materials, block styrofoam, batteries, mattresses, electronics, printer cartridges, latex paint, and more. In 2011, as the city began discussing plans for a new municipal operations facility, the committee asked that a portion of the facility actually strike that. We didn't ask, we fought, and we fought hard. And the four of us did, as some of you probably remember. I was mad. We asked that a portion of the facility be a permanent recycling center designed to replace Clean and Greens by annual event because seriously, Deb, Kathy, and Angie and I did not want to keep volunteering for it and holding it every single year until we're like 90. The final Clean and Green was held in April of 2015 for a total of 13 events. And the committee also pushed for sustainable features to be incorporated in the new mock building. We also do holiday light recycling, which is done at Ace Hardware and at the Recycling Center, tennis ball recycling, and monofilament fishing line recycling. And now I'm going to go through a list of awards and grants that we've received. So we received the 2010 In Business Magazine Sustainable Community of the Year, the 2010 finalist designation for the All-American City Awards in part due to our sustainability efforts. 2012 finalist, we were the 2012 finalist for the National Chamber of Commerce Seamen Sustainability Award based on our Sustainable City Plan. The 2012 Governor's Tourism Award for Sustainability. 2015 Recycling Efficiency Award from the DNR. And, hi. The 2015 Wisconsin Water Association Efficiency Award. The DATCP MedDrop Grant. Community Garden Funding from Fruit and Nut Tree Foundation, wait, wait. Community Garden Funding from the Fruit and Nut Tree Foundation Grant. Community Action Coalition Grant. Willie Street Co-op Grant. VFW Individual Donations and Gardener Fundraising Activities. And the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant in 2009. The grant was a total of 168,744 dollars for energy upgrades in municipal buildings. And Clean Energy Investments Grant from the Office of Energy Innovation in 2016. The grant total was 25,000 for energy efficiency improvements at City Hall and the Middleton Public Library. And the OEI Energy Planning Grant in 2018. And the grant total was 200,000 for the seven communities. And will be used to provide a roadmap to 100% renewable energy for the city. And next up is Kathy Olson.
I'm Kathy Olson, 1808 Middleton Street. I have a long list to get through here of city initiatives and resolutions and ordinances, so I'm going to get started. We had the Johnson Controls MOU for Building Energy Efficient Upgrade Evaluation. That was in July of 2009. We had LED streetlights upgrades beginning in October 2009. Developed sustainable guidelines for city purchasing practices. We joined the Green Tier Legacy Community in 2010. Zoning Code Updates to Incorporate Sustainability. TID 5 for redevelopment infill with focus, strong focus on sustainability and energy efficiency. Developed an extensive trail network. Innovative erosion control efforts and use of porous pavement. Rain garden development around the city. Expansion of Metro Transit in Middleton. Travel Green Initiative. MG&E electric vehicle charging stations. Building temperature control policy. Implemented the Energy Star Portfolio Manager. Bathroom water conservation kits were provided at the April 2015 Clean and Green to all the participants. Benchmarking of municipal buildings. The Sustainable Purchasing Policy in 2016. Other policies and resolutions. A resolution in support of establishing community gardens in 2008. Resolution to become an energy-independent community as the 25% by 2025. And we did that in 2009. City ordinance requiring recycling of clean plastic bags. There was a city ordinance permitting residential beekeeping was passed in 2012. City ordinance requiring construction and demolition waste recycling in 2012. Resolution to waive toilet replacement permit fees for water conservation program participants in 2014. Climate Mayor's Agreement pledging to support the Paris Climate Accord in 2018. And the 100% renewable energy resolution. Other zoning and developments. The committee also reviewed and provided recommendations on several developments and redevelopments, including Pleasant View Bridge, Middleton Center, Addison Development. The committee also participated in discussion regarding conservation subdivision zoning. And we reviewed the Urban Greenways Study also. Next up, we have Lee Schwartz. He's going to discuss renewable energy.
All right, it's a lot of stuff. I'm Lee Schwartz, I live at 3509 Strawberry Loop. I'm going to talk about renewable energy, our climate change referendum, and some things we have coming up. I'm going to run through this a little quick. I think you guys get the idea that this committee does a lot. So, on the renewable energy and energy policy front, we've participated in the Madison Solar Program to help Middleton residents with the opportunity to purchase solar. We've supported city staff in efforts to offer the first community solar project in the area, which is on the mock building. We asked that the city formally intervene in the 2014 MG&E rate redesign proposal. We helped out on the Terrace Avenue 16-kilowatt solar installation in 2015. We recommended approval for MG&E partnership solar project at the Middleton Police Department. Recommended utility-scale solar project at Maury Field. Solar projects on the mock cold storage EMS senior center buildings approved in 2018. One of the things that I'm incredibly passionate about was our climate change referendum. There were two questions that appeared on the November 2016 ballot. The local question was, should the City of Middleton reduce the risks of global warming through its policy decisions and actions? It was approved by 80.6% of our voters. On the national side, should the City of Middleton endorse a federal carbon fee and dividend program as a national strategy to reduce the risk of global warming? It was approved by 72.3% of our residents. Looking forward, the committee still has and is looking at continuously things such as curbside compost collection, greening the city's vehicle fleet, working with businesses and residents to decrease one-time-use plastics, increasing energy efficiency through city operations, accelerating the transition to renewable energy, simultaneously preparing for climate change while working to curb it, and completing the full update of the Sustainable City Plan so that it fully integrates with the comprehensive plan. I think Spencer, our chair, is going to wrap up a few items as far as the people we're losing. But just on a personal note, I've been a member of the committee since somewhere in the range of 2010. We're losing four people that I think 30, 35 years of experience on the Sustainability Committee. It's a lot of intellectual capital that's kind of heading out the door right now. There's turnover on the council. These are all healthy things, that's okay. The thing that I want to get across is that in the nine or so years that I've been on the council, the one thing that I continue to hear from our residents, both through the referendum and through conversations and through getting in front of you, is that our city is behind us and behind these ideas. Maybe not 100%, but pretty close to it. So I'd remind especially the new city council members to not only go back and familiarize yourself with our climate change referendum, but also go back and read our Sustainable City Plan. It's a little dated now, we're updating it, but it'll provide you a little bit of a foundation for where we're looking to go. And with that, I will turn it over to Spencer Schumacher.
Hi, guys. A little taller here. Spencer Schumacher, 3809 Lexington Drive. I am the chair. Is that a bad sound? I am the chair of the committee. I came here tonight just to really thank them. Chris Koenig, Deb Sager, Kathy Olson, and Joanna Richard. Talk about incredible people who have really done incredible things. The city is really going to be worse off for not having them anymore. But they have done, they have, every day I would show up to the committee meeting and they would talk, and I'd like, man, I have to be better. I have to be better at what I do, I have to think about it more. And every single day, they'd show up and it was incredible to watch them. They knew when to push the buttons, they knew when to restrain our members who were going at someone's throat. They really are an amazing group of women. And we are going to miss them and we are so grateful as a Sustainability Committee, as a city Middleton, as members of this world. Thank you, guys, for everything you've done for us.
These guys have done a phenomenal job. And let's remember Abby. Abby, do you want to stand up? She has managed this committee and has done a phenomenal job. And I remember 2008, all these things become so familiar. Again, great job, guys.
The mentor claimed to be the tallest guy here, and I want to see if that's...
Back to back.
Maybe it's his shoes.
I did not come here to talk about the Sustainability Committee, but since they held forth, I think I should tell you about my participation in some of their programs. They arranged for the Madison Program, which is a shared solar buy program, to be made available to citizens of Middleton, and we participated in that two years ago. Mainly because I drive an electric car. We had solar panels installed on our roof because we had a very good site that would accommodate that. And if any of you decide to do that, let me explain that any electricity that you generate goes back into the grid and MG&E will offset your entire utility bill based on the amount of electricity that you generate. So in the summertime, when the sun is high, they actually owe us money despite the fact that I'm charging my electric car from their grid. So if you think you want to do that, I would strongly encourage you to look into it. But as I said, that's not why I'm here. I'm Rob Conheim, 7501 Voss Parkway, and I'm here as the Chair of the Arts Committee. You council members may have noticed that you have a proclamation before you tonight acknowledging Middleton's embracing of what's called the State of Wisconsin Creative Economy Week, which basically describes how much the creative economy contributes to the well-being of communities, its vibrancy, its economic development, and so on. And as part of that, our Arts Committee has organized an art walk that's going to be held May 18. It's one week from this Saturday. And there will be, let me see, 28 artists displaying their wares downtown in 15 different venues. There will also be live music and live art demonstrations. So I would like to encourage all of you to please try and participate in that.
I will be volunteering too.
We have many volunteers, many community volunteers from both the Arts Committee and the community to help make this happen.
Thank you, Rob. Great job. Anybody else who wants to speak? Anybody else? Yeah, please go ahead.
Yes, please.
Yep, yep, come to the mic, identify yourself, and you've got three minutes.
Hello, I'm Peg Lyons, 1603 Pondview Court. And I'm here today to tell you about a meeting that my husband and I helped organize that was held last Saturday morning here in the council chambers regarding water issues at Tiedemann's and Strickers Pond. And our alderperson, Robert Burke, led the meeting. And we also had in attendance Katie Nelson and Susan West and Mayor Brar. And we felt we had an excellent turnout with 55-plus citizens that attended the meeting that lasted for about an hour and a half. And there was a lot of discussion about both short and long-term solutions to the problems at the flooding issues at Strickers and Tiedemann's. And I think the takeaway that I had from that meeting was that many citizens were feeling that this was not being addressed very vigorously by the city. And we would like to request that that be the case. I know that on your agenda this evening, you have an issue of tennis courts at Strickers Park. And that may be important and popular with some people. But we feel that issues such as that or restoring park land in the, at both of the areas is important. But that until the basic issue is addressed of the flooding, money might be wasted by spending it on those things rather than addressing the real issue. So we're asking that you, as soon as possible, address a short-term solution. We know that right now, the levels have been going down, but they're still way over the maximum suggested by the DNR. And that any kind of large rainstorm, which we could have tomorrow, could possibly produce flooding for a lot of residents in the area. So I'm here tonight to ask that you address this issue and take some action as soon as possible.
Thank you, Peg. Fully agree with you. Anybody else who wants to speak?
Hello. So I'm Tom Mayer, I live on Voss Parkway, kind of the same topic here. I live right next to Tiedemann Pond. So I, along with other neighbors, are very frustrated with how long it's taken to restore the Tiedemann Pond and Park area. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the meeting on the 4th. But I did get some updates and reviewed the meeting minutes. So much of the area has been destroyed and it's going to take years to recover. You've got 40-year-old trees that are dropping needles and are going to be dead and are already dead and looking terrible at this point. So it's been, I did something. That's not me. So it's been over eight months since the flood. And we can't even start repairing the park or the boardwalk since the water levels aren't under control. Based on the May 4th meeting, everyone appears to agree the short-term and long-term approaches. I think from a short-term approach, unless we get another significant rainstorm, I don't think it makes sense to put effort or money towards a temporary pump. Last October, there was communication by the Public Works that we should request RAN to develop specifications for a higher-capacity pump to replace the existing pump in Tiedemann. Obviously, that hasn't happened yet, but it probably should. And it would start to address some of the short-term needs. Replacing the existing pump is by no means a long-term solution. As we have seen, even with the two pumps running last fall, we're still not able to remove the water. that's going out of the pond right now, providing ongoing benefits until a longer solution can be implemented. There's obviously challenges and costs associated with doing work like this. You know, obviously Strand or some other contracting engineers can come up with the solutions to address those issues. In terms of funding, the referendum clearly referenced the funds should be used to repair Tiedemann and Stricker ponds. The funds are not going to be used to fix the parks and the boardwalks. So now's the time to be using those funds to make improvements to those ponds. We don't want to be having referendums saying things and then not seeing the money going towards those efforts. Last fall, the city was able to get a second pump actually installed within eight days, which was fabulous. I think that says a lot to the people that we have within the community here. Now, there seems to be a little bit of confusion on how to move forward with our current short-term solution that's needed. So the meeting on May fourth identified processes, but I don't think it's clear in terms of what steps are and who's responsible for those steps. Seems like the ball's been dropped somewhere, and I don't think it's clear, even after the meeting, who's supposed to be picking those up. You know, is it the engineering area? Is it the Public Works? Is it the Stormwater Committee? Does somebody need to bring something to the common council here? You know, those types of questions need to be clearly identified and resolved. So I'm just asking that, you know, a clear plan is put forward, you know, whatever the pump is, whatever the short-term solution is, we just need a plan that's put in place to define the timelines and the ownership that's clearly identified so we can prevent additional delays. And we've been sitting on eight months already. We don't need another entire summer to go by and find that we're in the same spot we are when the snow starts falling again.
Thank you, Tom. Next one?
Hi, I'm Emily Mayer. I live with that guy right next to Tiedemann Pond, and we didn't have a chance... Okay, I'm not quite that tall. We didn't have a chance to compare our notes, so I have a couple of redundancies, but I just wanted to offer a couple additional comments and points to emphasize regarding Tiedemann and Stricker and the flooding situation there. The meeting, as Peg referenced, was well-attended. There were at least a dozen extra people that I know were really interested and had hoped to be there but couldn't because of obligations. So the concern goes beyond even the folks that were able to show up on the fourth. I do know, you know, we've been picking everybody's brains after the meeting, you know, what did you hear? What do you think? And I know a lot of people were anxious to go and present concerns, to make sure that their concerns were out there. I think a lot of people were really hoping to hear, "Great, we're going to hear about this new pump that we talked about in the fall." And, you know, wah-wah, sad trombone, you know, that wasn't really anything that they could get answered at that point. So there was a bit of frustration there, that there has been this time that has passed without a plan in place or movement and towards a plan. And I know that, you know, there are consultants that need to be hired and that sort of thing in order to get something put into place, and I would just encourage that we look at ways to get that going. I saw on the agenda that there is a presentation by a UW group, and I was thinking, "If they need something else to study." You know, we have plenty of things that could be studied by students. So, you know, just looking at creative ways to get more resources directed towards this issue, I think, would be key. The other thing is that we've all talked a little bit about, there's a lot of different components here. There's Public Works, there's Conservancy, there's Stormwater, there are Parks and Rec. You know, all of these have a piece in this puzzle, and, you know, maybe there needs to be more of a point person for the particular flood issues. And perhaps there is, and we're just not aware, but it might ease communication and transparency into city efforts to resolve some of these issues. So that's what I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. Anybody else who wants to speak? Anybody else who wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to close that part of the meeting now, and the next item on the agenda, the approval of the consent agenda, Kathy.
Yeah, I'd like to remove the audit of the bills to be paid, separate item.
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion and approval of the April sixteen, twenty-nineteen Common Council minutes say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. The next motion for the... Okay, Bill, you want to speak?
Yeah, we normally do this at Finance Committee, but we have one addition to the bills this evening. It's for Club Tavern catering in the amount of five hundred dollars, and that is for the catering of the Taylor Park Shelter dedication ceremony.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's got the documents?
Right over here, right now.
Could you add that to the bottom of one of those documents?
To the main one?
Yeah. We can just write on the line. I'm assuming everybody that signed that is okay with that addition?
Any other questions for Bill or about any of the other bills here? Any other questions? Okay, so this was... Well, we need a motion, right? Okay, we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the bills as...
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, any...
Emily, you still got both documents or...
Yeah, I just got it.
They just go to Bill when it's done.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the audit of the bills to be paid, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. The next one is proclamation. Proclamation declaring the week of May eleven to May eighteen, twenty-nineteen, as Creative Economy Week. Whereas, the city of Middleton recognizes that investment in creative economy development, creative place-making, and civic engagement through the arts heritage and creativity are important to the health and vibrancy of our community and its future. Whereas, the city appreciates that creative economy development and community cultural engagement are directly related to economic vitality, a dynamic workforce, education for the twenty-first century, engaged residents, and the community's vibrancy and success. Whereas, the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis and Natural Endowment for the Arts report that nationally, the art and cultural sector contributed over eight-hundred-and-four billion dollars, or four-point-three percent, to the nation's gross domestic product in twenty-sixteen. Whereas, in Wisconsin, the arts and cultural sector impact is currently over nine billion dollars, which is three-point-one percent of the Wisconsin economy, contributing over ninety-four thousand jobs compared to thirty-one thousand in Wisconsin paper-making sector and thirty-five thousand to the state's biotech industry. Whereas, the city acknowledges that the arts spark creativity and innovation and established a city arts committee in two thousand and seven, and adopted a master plan for public arts and design in two thousand and nine to encourage creativity and innovation and to distinguish the community's identity and enhance its public amenities. Whereas, in celebration of Creative Economy Week, the city arts committee, with sponsorship from the Middleton Community Development Authority, is hosting Art Walk Middleton on Saturday, May eighteenth, which is a free, one-day event featuring the work of twenty-eight fine artists in a variety of media at fifteen locations. Now, therefore, the city of Middleton declares the week of May eleven to May eighteen, twenty-nineteen, as Creative Economy Week in Middleton to celebrate and promote the arts, creativity, and vitality in and for the state, its communities, and its people. This proclamation was adopted at the regular meeting of the Middleton Common Council the seventh day of May, twenty-nineteen. Need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay. All those in favor of to approve this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Abby, and the whole Arts Committee. Okay, now we are on to presentation, exciting presentation now by Jaslyn Sensing, the library director. She's going to update about the next chapter.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you very much. Exciting things happening this year at your local public library right across the street. The library is marking in its next chapter. Last year at the Common Council retreat on Saturday, we talked a lot about the Twenty-First Century Library, and since...
There we go. I think it's on now. Thanks. And since the dawning of the internet back in the early nineties, really, public libraries have really changed a lot. And in the Twenty-First Century, things have really moved more towards the audience and content, more towards tangible and digital objects. The directions are multidirectional. The focus is on audience engagement and the user experience. All of these are embedded in the community, and learning outcomes are purposeful and shared. So it's a lot more experiential. The stuff is still really important, but it's how we're gathering around that stuff and what we're doing with the spaces that we have. I also reviewed last year the top ten Twenty-First Century library trends. Place-making continues to be really important, mixed use and co-location, as we're seeing in some of our Madison libraries, leveraging economic impact, as was demonstrated in the two thousand and fifteen building study, that it was very important to Middleton residents that the library remains downtown as an economic anchor. Fun things like the maker movement. Partnerships and collaborations are becoming increasingly more important. Technology is changing everything every day. Flexible spaces and the way that we can use our spaces differently will continue to be important moving into the future. Sustainable buildings, sustainable relationships, civic engagement, which has always been a cornerstone of intellectual freedom and democracy with public libraries, continues to be even more important, all supporting the social structures that make up our quality of life. So if libraries equal strong communities, then libraries continue to be more about more than just books, and literacy is more than just reading. Someone who demonstrates this really well is author and researcher sociologist Eric Kleinenberg in his book Palaces for the People. For the next chapter project, we're really using Palaces for the People as a tool to talk about all of these social infrastructures that we work around in our municipalities that help really create the quality of life beyond just the built environment. So things like athletic fields, parks, schools, public libraries, senior centers, how all of these intrinsically have their own level of expertise, but together create that really cohesive fabric that can create social structures beyond just what we build. Of course, this book is available for checkout across the street or at any local library. If you're not into the book, then check out ninety... Check out the Ninety-Nine Percent Invisible podcast. This is an overview and a snapshot of the Palaces for the People and is a really great conversation starter. Highly recommended for anyone who is interested in their local city. So the Middleton Public Library has gone through many different iterations and evolutions since its inception in nineteen-twenty-six. What started off as a small shelf of books in a mercantile store has grown into a thirty-two-thousand-square-foot building that employs over sixty people. We are averaging in two thousand and nineteen just over fifteen-hundred people a day. In two thousand and seventeen, we celebrated the ninetieth anniversary, and this year we look forward to the next chapter. So in two thousand and fifteen, we had the feasibility study that reviewed the assets and needs of the Middleton Public Library with the firm Dimension Four. Several of the things that came out of that study, including that need to stay downtown as the economic anchor, was the need to triple the amount of space that we have in order to serve the community into the future. So we know that new construction or even some sort of major addition needs to happen in collaboration with the city planning department, other city departments, and so that's what we're really looking at to do with the community campus plan. And so right now with the next chapter, we're just addressing immediate needs that really focus on the three goals of, one, increasing public square footage, so the space that's available to the public, the best way we can do this is minimizing the footprint of some of the staff spaces that we're taking up. Two, create flexible spaces for new ways of gathering. For a while, we were jokingly calling this project "Put a Wheel on It" because we want to make the spaces as flexible as possible. So how can we use simple solutions like putting wheels on and casters on shelves so that one day they are in one spot and then we can move them out of the way for things like the Strolling Jazz Event and create more flexible spaces for new ways of gathering? And three, improve customer service experience. This goes across the board from transactions to wayfinding to safety and security. The total cost for the project is five hundred thousand, and with the help of the Rockstar Finance Department, thank you, Bill and Melissa, we have secured right around three hundred thousand of that. Two hundred thousand is our fundraising goal, and we are partnering with the Madison Community Foundation as our fiscal agent for this project. So some of the project features include utilizing the downstairs Friends bookstore as a new programming space, moving the Friends upstairs where they can have their store open all the time, creating more multidirectional tech space upstairs where families can use computers along with their children instead of going downstairs where it's difficult to work with a child, updated kids' areas, service desks, all kinds of fun stuff. What we are not doing is constructing walls, looking at any kind of major construction because we don't know what the long-term future of this building holds. So we're trying to do this as fiscally responsible as possible and as quickly as we can to turn around the project so that we can get the lifespan out of that before we plan for the long-term future. A quick look back to two thousand and three, two thousand and four, which was the last time any sort of major facility effort happened at the library besides, of course, the roof. So the source of funding back in two thousand and three and four included a capital budget of over seven hundred thousand dollars. The fundraising campaign was two-twenty. Commitment from the Dane County Library Service that year was seventy thousand. So this is a much different type of project. We are including naming rights as part of the fundraising project that was newly approved by the library board. Here's a quick snapshot of what the... This is if you're standing in back of the elevator tower, looking towards what will soon be the Friends bookstore area. This is a good example of the creative spaces that we're trying to create in the corner for our youth. Again, these are concepts, not concrete, but it gives you an idea of ways that we can rearrange things and just update furniture to create different types of spaces. Here's a snapshot of the entry. This project is not solving any major long-term problems. The only way that we'll be able to grow the collection is with more square footage. The only way we'll be really able to accommodate increased... further increased door counts is through additional square footage. The library will continue to get louder and louder and louder. So we're trying to quarantine that noise onto the first floor and create those quiet spaces within the building and in the lower level. The option of having a quiet space to go to in public cannot be underestimated, and so that is definitely a focus of this project. What this is not including is restrooms. The article in the Middleton Times Review included restrooms. That is not the case. We are not addressing any restrooms at this point in time. So you will not see any immediate capital needs on the two thousand and twenty budget. What you will see is projected and expected project expenses into the future, which don't necessarily need to be paid. necessarily need to be addressed immediately. But what will be you doing in the budget process is outlining what some of those expected projects will look like in relation to a master facilities plan. Phase one starts next week. This is what part of that opening up the square footage will look like. We'll be taking down the fencing in front of the circulation desk. The help desk will change. We're really going for minimal changes with maximum output. And so while to the user, that's going to be adding color and painting and better wayfinding, new furniture that's actually clean and you want to sit in it. For the staff, this means big change. We are looking at combining our two points of service, which is a very progressive and modern approach towards library service delivery. By minimizing and combining two of our points of service, we will also then be able to maximize the hours that staff is spending in other areas like programming and other support services. Anytime that you have another point of service that you're staffing full hours, you're doubling your staffing costs every time. So this starts next week. Right after that, we jump into painting the lower level. Again, not a lot is changing right away except fresh paint. It hasn't been painted since 2004. It's starting to really show it. This is also, painting is also really speaking towards accessibility and how we can minimize some of our signage and use more color for direction, directional points and wayfinding. So we have midlibrary.org/nextchapter is our project site that includes all of this information plus ways to give links to the Madison Community Foundation. More information about the naming rights is available for anyone that would like to inquire. We're encouraging businesses to do employer matches. Library staff are available to offer special programs to any businesses or organizations that would like a little extra something experiential as part of their giving process. And of course, anyone who donates $100 or more gets a really cool yard sign. That's all I have. Thank you so much. If you have any questions, you know how to get ahold of me. Thanks.
Great job. I, I just want to add that we have one of the best libraries in Wisconsin and our next challenge will be to meet the needs of underserved and unserved. Great job. And now we, Matt, you want to introduce the...
Please.
Yes, go ahead.
One of the outcomes of the flood was the opportunity to... As was starting to say, shortly after the flood, we met with a team of UW professors to talk specifically about how the UW could help in our recovery efforts. And Jeff Sledge, Dr. Jeff Sledge, who's a professor in the urban regional planning department, came up with the concept of a master's level class on damage recovery and specifically how governments respond to disaster and the, came up with the course Reimagining the Unimaginable. And I was speaking with him earlier, I think this is an important thing for students to learn, especially those going into government. As we've seen, the frequency of these events are going to lead to continued efforts and by communities to respond. And I've learned a lot by being able to work with this student group and I, they did an hour-long presentation to Conservancy Lands Committee two weeks ago and are going to do a very abridged version of that presentation this evening and I'm going to turn it over to them.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Andrew Busker and our class is here from the Department of Planning and Landscape Architecture. Our class is here tonight to share our findings and recommendations to the city of Middleton regarding the August flood event. So the scope of our project looked at just the hydrologic flows coming from the north and south forks of Pheasant Branch through the Pheasant Branch Stormwater Corridor. So our focus was analyzing potential for water storage and control through watershed management, policy, infrastructure, and vegetation, as well as methods of communication needed to better prepare Middleton for a future where natural forces are increasing in frequency and intensity. So our report is broken up into four sections and I'm going to step away and have the rest of my classmates here go through the different sections that they worked on with more information.
Hi, I'm Thor Jepson and I was working with a group that was focused on identifying strategies to reduce both the rate and volume of flow coming into the Pheasant Branch Creek Corridor during future storm events through identifying watershed management strategies. So we are specifically focused on identifying areas on the landscape that could be used for wetland restoration and also water storage through just natural topographic depressions. And so to do that, we performed a GIS analysis using soil drainability and runoff potential data to identify these suitable sites. And in that analysis, if you look at that, that left map, we identified approximately 750 acres on the landscape that could be suitable. Green represents more suitable and red is less suitable. And a lot of those areas are up in the, the North Fork Subwatershed, which is largely agricultural. So we did a second analysis that also incorporated farmland classifications for soil. So we wanted to exclude anything that was classified as prime farmland. And even in that analysis, we still found approximately 200 acres of suitable sites. And then using that second analysis, we wanted to also estimate how much water those sites might be able to hold. So we used some digital elevation data and we discovered that some of those more suitable sites have the potential to store over 1,600 acre feet of water, which could significantly reduce how much is going into the corridor during future storm events. And this analysis doesn't also include, you know, the benefits of slowing the flow from wetland restoration. This is just the storage capacity. And then so using the, that analysis, we were able to create some recommendations for the city, including performing some field studies just to confirm that those sites we identified actually are suitable for wetland restoration or storage and performing further hydrologic modeling just to better understand how that landscape might respond and actually confirming that, that water storage capacity, both naturally and through some extra engineering improvements. And then also suggesting to the city, consider using zoning, strengthening of intergovernmental agreements and the purchase of conservation easements to protect that, those areas from future development. And in our report, we outlined some funding mechanisms, opportunities federally and at state level and the county level that might assist the city in doing so.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Amy Fetrell and I worked with a group that looked at adapting urban infrastructure, so specifically what can be done within the city limits of Middleton. And the first thing that we did was run several different scenarios through FEMA's hazardous software to find out how much of the flooding that actually happened came from Pheasant Branch Creek itself and how much was from the heavy rainfall and not having enough drainage throughout the city to actually drain that. And we found that quite a bit of the flooding right around the Business Park and the Confluence Pond was in fact from Pheasant Branch Creek. So our first recommendation is to implement a floodplain overlay district around the Business Park and Confluence Pond area. These districts are usually used in areas that are in FEMA's 100-year floodplain, but given how much flooding occurred in this area, we would really recommend this being implemented here anyway. The flood fringe, floodplain ordinances that the city currently has would be the best ordinances to apply to this overlay district with a few changes and additions. And I'm not going to go through all of them because they're in the report in a lot more detail, but just to highlight a few of the most important ones. Requiring flood insurance for all of the businesses that are in that area would be a really good first step. Middleton is in the community rating system program of FEMA and has the highest possible rating, which means that those businesses could get significant discounts on flood insurance. We also recommend business continuity and emergency response plans for those businesses as having those plans on hand helps businesses come back from financial losses from weather-related disasters much more quickly. And then the last one I want to highlight is disallowing the storage and use of hazardous materials in that area. There are a few different businesses that use or process hazardous materials or hazardous waste right around there. There's been soil and water quality testing by the old landfill dump, but not in this area. So we would recommend doing some soil and water quality testing to find out whether or not there was any hazardous material that might be problematic. And then in the future, not allowing those businesses to process or use those onsite in that location. And then the other thing that we looked at was urban water storage for rainfall and drainage to prevent significant runoff. So just a couple of really short-term affordable things that can be done. We looked at rain gardens and green roofs and we looked at several different case studies of cities that have incentivized residential and businesses to put those onto private properties. So there's several different examples of incentive structures in there, as well as curbside rain gardens and pocket green spaces in the public right-of-way that the city could install. And then in terms of long-term, we looked at floating streets, permeable surfaces, and water lanes, all of which are street infrastructure that help water to go through streets or run off them into plants that love water and will absorb it instead of remaining on the streets and flooding them.
Hi, everyone. I was, my, my name's Eric Marshall and I was with the Restoration and Recovering Vegetation Group. So before we set out to make any recommendations, we did some analysis of Middleton and what some of the historic conditions of this area might have been. Primarily Middleton was emergent and wet meadow with some oak savanna mixed in there. And obviously, as development has increased in this area, we saw, we've seen a lot of these habitats become displaced. We also took a look at some of the history of bank stabilization along the Pheasant Branch Creek Corridor. And then we took a look at how all of these things kind of played into the current conditions after the most recent flood event, which were extreme loss of vegetation and bank erosion. So we set out to make a series of recommendations for the city essentially based around restoration within the floodplain. And these two sections here you can see are just typologies of what these areas might look like after some of the plant recommendations. So this map here is a composite of essentially erosion risk within the Pheasant Branch Creek Corridor. And this is done by an outside consultant, but we thought it was really important to note because it identified some of the highest risked areas along this creek corridor. And so moving forward, a goal for the city should be to prioritize these areas in red, which you can see, as those are the areas where we're seeing the most amount of sediment deposition or bank erosion. The second recommendation we'd like to make is to just increase the vegetation within the flood zones. So that's the map that you can see on the left. So planting within these flood zones will really help the existing vegetation communities by adding more natives and emergent wetland plants that'll really help to facilitate storm water, stormwater infiltration within these areas. And then the final recommendation we have is to just supplement a lot of the existing vegetation. As you can see on the map on the right, there's a lot of different land covers in this area. So making smart choices about what plants are placed along which areas of the creek will really help benefit native habitat as well as wildlife. And I should note that all of these plans are based off of a series of plant lists we created, which are set up for different planting zones, emergent, wet meadow, and prairie.
My name is Tristan Forgé and I was in the group that looked at building community resiliency throughout the flood restoration efforts and then also in future natural disaster events as well. So the first thing we looked at was the demographics in the city of Middleton and it really worked out was that there's a census tract pretty much right around the creek corridor, outlined in yellow there. And what we found when comparing this to surrounding areas was that residents in this census tract right around the corridor had a lower median income. They were more likely to rent their homes. They were more likely to be a single parent household, less likely to have advanced degrees, and more likely to be racial minorities. So while these disparities were not extreme, they definitely exist and they are really important for the city to take a look at because it makes this community right around the creek more vulnerable in the face of natural disaster. So using these findings and then also the findings from the 2018 Conservancy Lands Plan, we developed two major recommendations, the first of which is to form a community of practice. So communities of practice just bring together a group of individuals from a diverse skillset, expertise, and experience to work on a specific issue. So in this case, that issue would be building community resiliency throughout the creek corridor in the face of future disaster. Also, increasing accessibility in the corridor and strengthening communication amongst user groups in the corridor. So that brings us to our second recommendation, which is to utilize a communication plan. And this plan specifically would be for the restoration process and we have a template in the report that can be adapted for future projects as well. So the main goals of this plan will be to provide consistent and accessible information for user groups and residents and also to really engage and work with the stakeholder groups throughout the entire process of the restoration. And so the plan includes three main parts. That's going to be the stakeholder management plan to ensure that all user groups are represented and have a seat at the table, the types of communication that we are suggesting the city use, and then also a staff member responsibility plan to ensure consistent delivery of information. So we really hope that these two recommendations will help the city to build community resiliency, including that community directly around the creek that is more vulnerable. Thank you.
So based on these groups and our sections in the report, we have some immediate action steps that we'd recommend to the city of Middleton. I'm not going to read through them because you can all read them here, but we will be sending our report to the city of Middleton soon. Our goal is to get it to you by the end of this week. We have some minor adjustments and things we still have to do, so it might go into next week, but as soon as it's ready, we'll send it out to you. We recommend that the report is read in a digital format because especially on those water resource management maps, you can zoom in a lot better on them and you can see them much, much clearer. In addition to that, we will be sending our GIS files and other information over to Mark and Matt in the Department of Public Lands Recreation and Forestry. So they'll have that information that they can work with on their things moving forward. So at this time, we can take a little bit of questions and things if that works for you all.
Any questions for the wonderful students? Any questions? Well, at this, yeah, Emily.
I, I'd like a little bit more on the communication plan. How would you envision that as a policy?
I can't say that we've thought about it too much as a policy. It was more just something that the city would implement and maybe, we really are suggesting that one person be in charge of all communication. As far as policy goes, I don't think we really had anything in mind, but if that is something that the city would like to do, that's definitely could be a good idea.
Any other questions? Amy?
On Saturday, during the meeting about the Tiedemann and Stricker's Pond, I think there was reference to your study. Did you indeed talk about the ponds and dredging? Was that part of your study or was that reference not, not correct?
The work of this student group just focused on the creek corridor primarily. I know that there were, there was a, and the mayor may have better knowledge of this than I do, but there was a previous student group that did a study, I know, on Stricker and there may have been one done on Tiedemann as well, that did talk about dredging and, both benefits and negative outcomes of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, at this time, I'd like to recognize Professor Jeff Sledge, if you could stand up, and also the department chair, Ken is here. Ken, could you please stand up too? And the others. This is really outstanding work by these dedicated students and the city of Milton is so grateful to Professor Sledge and, and the department chair for selecting this project. We are very, very thankful. Thank you again. And we are going to be using this information. It is not going to sit on the files. Okay, we are on to the Middleton Community Foundation presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tammy Derrickson, Senior Services Director for the City of Middleton. Most of you have received in your packet tonight, a request from the Commission on Aging to establish a formal endowment fund with the Community Foundation. to establish a formal endowment fund with the Community Foundation of Madison. And I've invited Angela Davis here tonight and Ann Casey to discuss that a little bit with you. But as you look through your packet, you're going to notice I enclosed some items for your reference as to the benefits to the senior center in creating an endowment fund. So, we are seeking to use funds that we have in a fund that's called the Future Fund. And this is the fund that we take donations into currently, and they are set aside for senior center use. And that fund, we would like to take $50,000 from that existing fund, transfer it into the Madison Community Foundation to establish that long-term endowment fund. And that will do several things for us at the center. It is the establishment, a formal establishment of something we haven't had before, which is a planned-giving opportunity for donors and for people who are looking to do estate planning. And you'll also see, it also really begins a more synergized relationship between the Madison Community Foundation and the senior center. It allows donors to create a lasting legacy of support, and their gifts go on in perpetuity. So, without further ado, I'm going to have Angela Davis and Ann Casey come up, give you a brief presentation. Although you've already got my packet items previously, there is an orange folder on your desk from the Madison Community Foundation as well.
Thank you, Tammy. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Common Council, staff, and citizens. I'm Angela Davis, Development Director at Madison Community Foundation, and I am joined by my colleague, Ann Casey, who serves as Vice President of Finance and Operations. We are here representing the Madison Community Foundation, as Tammy mentioned, and we're thrilled to be here this evening. Tammy contacted me at the end of last year about establishing an endowment at Madison Community Foundation. And I met with the Commission on Aging in January to also discuss this. Many of you may be familiar with Madison Community Foundation and due to the partnerships that we do have here in the city of Middleton. Besides the next, the library's Next Chapter Pass Through Campaign Fund, which Jocelyn spoke about earlier, we also have nine permanent funds in the Middleton community, which includes Friends of Pheasant Branch Conservancy, Middleton Area Public Land Endowment, MAPLE, and Middleton Endowment, which is one of our regional giving partners. And you do have a list in your folder. I won't go through the whole list. And also, the city of Middleton has benefited from grants awarded to Middleton from the Madison Community Foundations. These grants have been awarded to either nonprofit organizations that are housed here in Middleton and to the city of Middleton for various projects. We also have individuals and corporate fund holders, and they either live in Middleton or have businesses here in Middleton. I know that you have already received some information, but just want to share a little bit about Madison Community Foundation and what are community foundations. I never want to assume everyone knows what the community foundation was because I was a little unsure myself before I started working with Madison Community Foundation. Community foundations are grant-making, public charities dedicated to improving the lives of people in a defined, local geographic area. We bring together the financial resources of individuals, families, and businesses to support effective nonprofits in their communities. We were created in 1942 as Madison Community Trust. We are a 501(c)(3) organization. We have over 1,100 funds that are housed at Madison Community Foundation with assets, including our supporting organizations, of over $254 million. We are the Communities Foundation. So, what is an endowment? An endowment offers ongoing annual distribution to be utilized at the discretion, in this case, of the Middleton Senior Center. It provides an additional giving tool for those who really care and have a passion for the senior center, which we know a lot of people do. As I visited the senior center, I was struck by the different activities and the different areas and staff that really love this community and love the senior center. And I see a lot of smiles here because you all understand how important the senior center is. It's not just a place. It can be families, well, to a lot of people, and a gathering's place, as Jocelyn mentioned. It's so important to have these gathering locations. And endowments are forever. I always like to say that, and Tammy also alluded to, that once the endowment is established, it will be in perpetuity forever. And how it works? Donors make tax-deductible donations to the fund. Gifts are held in the fund and are dedicated to the purpose. And in this case, the Middleton Senior Center. Funds are invested for long-term growth. Annually, the senior center will receive a letter from us informing them of the distribution amount that they will have available for the year. Our spending policy is 4.25% on the average fund value over 20 quarters. Madison Community Foundation's investments are overseen by our Investment Committee. And you have that information in your folder, and I also saw it was on the, in the packet, and it's also on the website in your packet, 157-page packet, no less. I envy you all every two weeks going through these large packets. Madison Community Foundation can also accept a wide variety of assets from donors. We can accept cash, check, credit cards, electronic transfers, and Tammy also mentioned legacy gifts, which can include life insurance, IRA gifts, retirement accounts, and charitable gift annuities. So, we give donors options. They can also make gifts of security, real estate, and other assets. And we're able to handle that, so the staff can focus on what's important, the seniors. Advantages of working with us is that we do give donors options. You don't, your staff doesn't have to worry about particularly the city acknowledgements, tax receipting, keeping up with the books, all that good stuff. We will handle that, and we will make those reports available. And have, the staff will have online access to be able to view who has made donations to the fund. We take care of, like I said, the acknowledgement letters, and we make it possible for donors to be able to go online to make gifts 24 hours a day, which in this day and age, many people do after they finish shopping on Amazon. And planned giving, it is crucial. One or two estate gifts can be very transformative to the senior center. You want to have a vehicle in place that's important for people that support the senior center during their life to be able to support the center after their lifetime has been completed. I try to say that very nicely because people want to support the senior center while they're here living and after they're gone. They want to make sure that the senior center will be there and have the funds available to grow, increase programming, and do the things that need to be done to keep the work going. We are efficient. We can handle any type of gift situation, and is awesome with that. And one key point also is sometimes you have donors that want to make gifts and remain anonymous. We can handle those types of transactions as well. And again, endowments are permanent. The senior center's success is our success. And we look forward to a very productive relationship if it is the Common Council's pleasure. Any questions?
Any question for Angela? Any questions?
No, but thank you for the presentation.
Well, thank you so much.
You're more than welcome.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, Tammy, for making this happen. I guess this is wonderful, so. Okay, so I know Brad is waiting here. We are going to go to the resolutions. Resolution 2019-23. Resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $3.4... $3,490,000 general obligation promissory note.
Thank you. So, just before the meeting, I passed out a brief summary of the resolution you'll be considering, and I'll walk through that. For the people who haven't seen me before, my name is Brad Viegoot. I'm with the Public Finance Department of Baird. Baird serves as the underwriter of the city's debt, and it's in that capacity that I'm here this evening. This, the action that's on your agenda tonight is the last step, the final step in the issuance of promissory notes to fund the 2019 Capital Improvement Program of the city. The initial action was taken back in March by the Finance Committee and the Council authorizing us to get to this point. With the adoption of the resolution tonight, interest rates will be locked in. The terms and conditions of the financing are effectively finalized and will continue towards a closing date. I'd start by indicate, by saying, first of all, all of the terms that are outlined on the summary page that I provided are consistent with what was authorized back in March. This is an issue of notes, $3.3,490,000, scheduled to close on May 30th of this year. Really, the good news, the bottom line of this, the interest rate that's available to be locked in this evening is 2.21%. It's, yeah, it's really, I looked back at the interest rate that we had last year. Based on last year's market, it was 2.66, so quite a bit lower than the rate we had last year. Procedurally, this debt issue was released out into the marketplace this morning. We were seeking out investors nationwide. We were faced with a very high, an unusually high volume of other similar obligations in the market. So, a lot of supply in the market. We had orders from investors for only 11% of this entire issue, but Baird took the step of, we're applying our capital to underwrite the unsold balances. And 11% is lower than where Baird would typically commit to underwrite. But what we're trying to demonstrate really is we have a long relationship and history working with the city. And when we're in a tough market environment, rather than the city having to pay higher interest rates, Baird's willing to apply capital to keep these rates as low as we can. So, the summary of the financing plan is on the following page. I won't walk through this in a lot of detail, but I do want to point out a couple of things. This is $60,124 less expensive in terms of interest cost than what was presented for planning purposes back in March. And this plan does allow room for future financings without seeing significant spikes in the debt service levy of the city. So, there's room for future capital programs, capital projects, to be layered in, into your overall financing schedule. Now, part of the rating, I'm sorry, part of the issuance process is securing a bond rating from Moody's Investor Service. Higher the rating, the lower the interest rates. The city has a AA1 bond rating. That's the second-highest rating that Moody's assigns. Bill had previously distributed the complete rating report. I do want to walk through just a couple of highlights because it's a very positive report, as it has been in the past, but there's even some more positive changes to the language and some additions. First, just some of the credit strengths of the city. Moody cites the city's large tax base, its above-average residential wealth and income levels. In terms of challenges, they do continue to cite the long-term receivable in general fund from the underperforming golf course. On a plus on that comment, the council put a plan in place several years ago, around three or four years ago, to address that underperformance. And the plan has been adhered to. And the plan is on track to repay the general fund completely and repay other advances from TID number three. And Moody's recognizes that. We were able to report to Moody's as part of our presentation that the city said it's going to take care of this. It's implemented a plan to take care of it, and it's on track. So, those are all positives. In, so that was one of the changes. Moody cites things that could lead to a downgrade towards the bottom of the page. This might seem minor, but I think it's important. They say, well, a return to operating deficits that leads to a deterioration of overall reserves, that could lead to a downgrade. What they took out of that sentence last year, they had additional in that sentence that says, "return to operating deficits in the city's golf course." So, they removed that section indicating, or really sending a message to me, to the marketplace, that they're not as concerned about the golf course in particular because there's a plan in place and it's working. Factors that could lead to an upgrade, material, I'm sorry, maintenance of reserves and structural balance within the city's operating funds, and also significant and sustained tax base expansion and diversification coupled with stronger socioeconomic profile. A couple other highlights I wanted to point out. On the second page of this rating report, Moody's puts together a statistical table where they look at the finances, the debt, other statistics. One that I really want to focus on in particular is towards the bottom. It says net direct debt. So, this is how much principal the city has outstanding in debt. At the end of 2017, it was 46.7 million. Your 2018 audit's going to show that it's 44 million. If you go back to 2012, there was $64 million of debt outstanding. So, the city has seen, through prudent management, prudent leadership, you've seen a $20 million reduction of your debt from, just from 2012, very significant reduction. Another way to look at that is the state, by statute, sets a limit on how much the city could borrow in total. Back in 2012, you were at 47% of that statutory limit. In 2018, you're down to 25%. So, there's two factors there, the growth in the city's value and the reduction in the outstanding principal. Very positive trends that's recognized by Moody's. And a couple other things, just briefly. The, Moody's does talk about in the, under Financial Operations, that there was the unplanned expenditure of $356,000 for the, because of the flood event. But, so that was an event that really could have had negative implications to the city's bond rating. I mean, this is the reason, I'm, sometimes get the question, why do we have an unassigned fund balance? Why, you know, why aren't we spending that money down or rebating it to taxpayers? It's for emergencies, just like you had last summer. That's why you carry a fund balance. Importantly, the city's decisions and actions, its management and leadership, coming out of that flood event were relayed to Moody's, and they recognize how quickly the city acted. It really went a long way to avoid the downward pressure that otherwise might have been seen in this rating. The referendum, for example, is specifically cited in this report from Moody's as a positive rating factor of the city taking immediate steps to address this, to draw down a fund balance and put a plan in place to remedy the situation. We also talked to Moody's about the insurance claim, or working with FEMA to get reimbursed for some of these costs, working with the state of Wisconsin. So, those are, I think, all very positive outcomes that's recognized in this rating report. I'm going to pause there. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to go into more detail, but I know you have a very full agenda tonight. But overall, I would, I just want to say, though, this was a very successful note issuance, a very successful outcome on your bond rating that really speaks to the leadership of both elected officials and staff.
So, but it seemed like a seven-year note, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, we got a better rate for seven years than longer?
Yeah, yeah, if we would have, right, if we were, say, a 10-year note, the rate would have been higher, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Brad? Any other question?
Thank you very much. Okay, sure.
Yes, thank you.
So, do we need to have a motion to approve? Okay, yes. So, need a motion?
I'll move approval. Second?
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the Resolution 2923, borrowing $3.49 million in a general obligation promissory note, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to now the regular agenda and go to item number one. Agreements. Establish Endowment Fund with Milton Community Foundation for the benefit of the senior center.
I'd like to make a motion to support establishing an endowment fund with the Middleton Community Foundation, Madison, Madison Community Foundation.
Need a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes. Now we are on the memorandum of understanding with Larry Wagner regarding airport land management.
Move approval?
Need a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question, I guess, for Mike. If he's no longer planting soybeans, what is he trying to recoup his investment with?
He uses the grass or hay for his own purposes. I'm not exactly what sure, or sure what it's for.
But that's all that's left is hay and grass?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there's no cash crop, and in this agreement, he is agreeing not to put cash crops in. If he did, we would charge for that, and last year was a hundred twenty dollars, a bushel, I think, and that was
Hundred twenty per acre.
About four thousand dollar payment that he made. But the benefit we get is not having to cut the grass. We don't contract with anybody to do that, and it has to be at a certain level for the airport. It can be no higher than fourteen inches. It's got to be cut in the middle of the year, so he, he helps us to comply with all of those regulations.
And just for everyone that's new, is, is the reason that's no mowing before the mid-July, is that for birds?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think it has to do with habitat.
Mike, how often does he mow it, once he begins, or once that July deadline hits?
I don't know, frankly. I just, we can't allow it to grow higher than fourteen inches.
Yep.
Because then it does become habitat for birds.
Probably dependent on the weather.
Yeah, that too. Yeah. I mean, the, the idea for the airport is to try to avoid a habitat that, that encourages birds to reside there. Birds are a major cause of hazardous incidents for flight.
So does, does Rich Maury monitor that, if he thinks it's getting a little long? Does he make a phone call, or how does that, or is it just kind of a?
Uh, Larry Wagner's right there. I mean, he, his farm is just north of the airport, so he watches it pretty carefully.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding with Larry Wagner regarding the airport land management, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number three. Amendment to agreement with EOR for floodplain modeling and mapping to extend steady reach to two hundred feet north of the Century Avenue.
I'll move approval for discussion.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, so let's have a questions or comments.
Subject to attorney approval, please.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
That's what I said, didn't you hear me?
Yeah, I guess, Matt, do you want to say something about the history, or should I, it's, I guess, the first, the plan was to do it only up to the Park Street, and, but there's a lot more work to be done between Park and
Century.
No, first it was, and this is to extend up to Century, so this was
This is to go beyond Century, I think.
Two hundred feet north of Century. So it's, it's
Yes, but
The original plan was to go to Century Avenue coming from the south. This plan is to go two hundred feet north of Century Avenue into the main conservancy.
So we are paying thirteen thousand for two hundred feet. The first plan was, well, I will let them speak, so Matt, do you want to do it, or Mike, you want to do it?
I'll give it a try, and then Matt can fill in where I don't have all the details. Generally, the Water Resources Commission commissioned the floodplain modeling to, as I understand it, to Park Street, but no further. And so the, the work that's been done by Public Lands is to get it, the entire Creek Corridor to north of Century Avenue, and this is to try to get both on the same track. So the hydrology study, on the one hand, that, that Public Lands is reviewing, and the other is the floodplain modeling that's being done through, I believe it's, well, it's this company, EOR, formerly Mars. I guess I didn't get it right.
You got it right.
All, all that I'd add is that we've issued an RFP from the Public Lands Department that's going to look at a planning effort throughout the Creek Corridor. Because of this work that Water Resources had commissioned, we feel that extending their study to cover areas that our future consultant will need the data from is probably the most cost-effective, rather than having another consultant have to do this work at a future time and date, as we look at the overall Creek Corridor study.
Don't go away yet. What's the source of funds for the RFP?
I'll plead ignorance on this. I know Gary's been working on this with some discussion with Mark Wagner, but I don't know all the, the details.
Was what?
TID three.
No, we can't use TID three because it's not in the TID, that's TID.
The original
Original was TID three, yes.
Yes, that's what I thought Mark asked.
More than half a mile outside.
So what did the source of funds, Bill?
Yeah, the, the source of fund for the area up to Park Street was TID three. This additional area is outside of the half-mile, so we've determined that TID three would not be available for this. I think options to fund this additional work would either to be do, to do it through TIF District number five. This is within that area, and stormwater and greenway features were identified in the project plan for TID five. Or the other potential alternative would be to use public lands funds for this project because of the potential benefits for public land improvements that would be made as part of future studies.
Okay, so, Mark, which one do you prefer?
Here, I'll try something outrageous here. Why don't we, I'd like to refer this to finance so that we can talk about the source of funds. I don't have any issue with, with agreeing to the contract, that I would like to refer this to finance so we can figure out the best place to fund this from. So I'll make that motion as well.
Sure, I, I have a question on that. Is there, is this a time-sensitive project in that it's already undergoing for the main study? Is that correct?
I don't think that comes, I, I'd said I'd like to go through with the contract, and then all we have to do is figure out internally how to source it.
So are you saying that let's approve this as a concept and send the source of the
Yes.
So, okay, so that's your motion?
Yes.
You are only talking
No, actually, the motion was to approve.
Yes.
I'd like to also make a referral of finance to figure out the sourcing.
Okay, okay, all right. So is the ref, is it okay with you, Robert?
Yes.
So just to clarify, we could execute the agreement because we agree we want to do it, but we just don't have the funding source yet, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion to approve this contract and then refer it to the Finance Committee for the source of funding, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. So item number four. Request for revision to tax increment, TID number five, agreement with Milton Market LLC, Tracea Maxius Development, including Milton Market, seven six two to Lisa Lane.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? This is, uh, there is really not any big change here.
When are they proposing on getting started?
Does anybody know when they're going to start?
Last time I talked to Robin Pharaoh from Tracea, she said sometime this spring, so very soon, potentially. They have their zoning in place. Obviously, they need to get this revision to the TIF agreement, and they need to get their building permits, so there are still some hurdles. But I haven't gotten anything more up-to-date than that.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Abby's letter said that this should be subject to any additional modifications by city, city attorney, is that
It's fine.
Okay, okay.
Okay, with this, that modification, all those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number five, under the agreements, collateral assignment of pledge and security agreement and assigned development agreement, TID bond, and payment due under TID bond, Damming Investors LLC, City Attorney.
Move approval.
Any questions or comments? This is about the Chartwell Industries. So, okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number six, stormwater management system maintenance agreement with Damming Investors. Again, Chartwell thirteen forty-five Damming Way.
Move approval, second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to miscellaneous. Item number one. Reclassification and promotion of golf course mechanic to golf course assistant superintendent and mechanic.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Does our city administrator have something that he wants to say?
No, I'm just here in case you had questions.
Okay.
That's so nice.
Okay, if there are no question or comment, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number two, authorization to fill the position of public lands crewman, Doc Diamond is retiring.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
His real name is Tim, but you, you know him by Doc.
But they just call him Doc.
And he's been largely responsible for the great maintenance of the cross-country ski paths on the golf course for the past many years.
Yes. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number three. Authorization to fill position of assistant director of senior services, this is a newly created position.
Move approval is recommended by personnel.
Second.
Did want to just comment on that, if I could. It, it's actually a position that is reformulated. It was the program coordinator for the senior center, and now we're making it the assistant director. But because of, this position had been outside of the classification for its particular range within the classification, it will actually be within the range and will cost less, we believe, to fill the position, adding responsibilities as assistant director, which we've long wanted and needed, for somebody to be acting in the place of Tammy when she's not available. Tammy, is there anything you want to add?
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, to say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. Now the request for acting duty pay finance department.
Move approval is recommended by personnel.
Second.
Any questions or comments? There are two people who are going on, on a leave, so this is to help them out, so.
Well, it's to help us out.
Alpassa.
In their absence.
Yes, yes.
We are going, we are going to be understaffed this summer, and it's important to reward the folks who are taking on more responsibility in both Melissa's and Lori's absences. It's going to be tough to do all that they do, so we just ask for your patience.
Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to award or bid court professional services. This is the award or bid to Munson Incorporated for the tennis court reconstruction and sticker park.
Motion to award bid to Munson Incorporated. Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? This is that tennis court there which was destroyed by the floods, and it's paid by the insurance.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. We are under contracts, item number one, contract with the Stepstein Group Incorporated for Management of Energy Innovation Grant Program Project.
Move approval.
Need a second?
I had a quick question on that. So on the memo, Abby, it mentions that city will keep a portion of the funds to cover some of the staff time representing the grant, fifty-seven hundred dollars. And if I'm, I'm sure I'm misreading this, there's a, there's a chart on page seventeen that says maximum coalition member reimbursement, and there's, it's fifty-six seventy-three? So is the fifty-seven hundred just rounding up, or?
Yes, yeah, I just rounded.
Got it.
Sorry about that.
Just trying to make sure I got it. So it would, it would really be fifty-six seventy-three?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Yeah, and we'll, we'll spend more staff time than fifty-six thirty-three administering the grant, of course. Uh, and we, we also had quite a significant amount of work from our assistant city attorney to draft the, the contract, because we're the lead administrator on the grant.
Sure.
Um, but this, this is a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project, of which the city of Middleton is not having to contribute anything in the way of operating funds.
I think this is, you know, Milton applied for it, and, and they brought all those other cities together, this is a great project.
Yeah, it's absolutely.
Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. Next one is referral. Referral to LNO concerning amending city smoke-free ordinance to include electronic smoking devices.
I move to refer to LNO.
Second.
Yeah, this is something which brought by Elder MC and Elder Fussar, so any questions or comments?
Just a quick question. Do we have anything currently that deals with vaping or anything like that? Just no language whatsoever, okay? So it sounds like a good time to touch base on that.
I agree. Excellent.
Any other question or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes. Now we are on to resolution, resolution number one, twenty nineteen dash twenty-two, accepting release of existing easement and granting replacement to MGN easement on seven five zero eight University Avenue.
Motion to approve this resolution.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, Katie, second. Sean, do you want to say anything, it's just a easement? Any questions for Sean? It's, first it was ten by ten, now it's ten by twenty, that's all the difference.
And shifted, shifted north.
Yeah, shifted north. Okay. All those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to committee assignments. So there's a airport master plan advisory committee, Town of Springfield, Danzis, and so I just got a letter from the Town of Springfield, and it's, and I did talk to Danzis as well on Friday, so this is for the consideration for the council. It is only advisory committee, they were going to have four meetings, and there probably two or three meetings still remaining, that's, that's all there is to it, so. I don't really have any problem adding another person, so, but it's up to you, so.
Uh, well, I would make a, a, a motion to approve it with a caveat that this has got to close any appointments. We can't continue to appoint people, I understand that the town wants.
Okay.
Uh, but, you know, every, it seems like every other week we're, so my motion would, would be that
This is the last appointment.
And the appointments are closed.
Okay. Need a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
It's reasonable.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Cindy?
I would like an explanation of, we've already appointed a member from the Town of Springfield, why we're now being asked to appoint a second one. And I've got to admit, I've got concerns of why you've got two people from the Town of Springfield on a City of Middleton Advisory Committee. One seems sufficient.
It is, it's for the master plan, so it's
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just wondering why.
Okay, okay.
I want an explanation of why we're getting a request for a second member.
I have no problem, I mean, whether you want to prove it or not, so.
You haven't answered my question.
Yeah, I just got a letter. Yeah, I just got a letter. I mean, I, I don't know, so who initiated, who asked them to write that letter, but I didn't, so.
So, was the initial person not from the Town of Springfield?
It is, she's from the Town of Springfield, and
Appointed by the Town of Springfield?
She was, uh, she was, uh, uh, she was referred, well, it was, uh, Elder Howard Teale who recommended her to me, and, and he also said that the other, other airport commission members were also in favor of her. So, I was just going with what
Have anything to do with the Town of Springfield?
Yes, she lives, she lives in Springfield.
With the Town of Springfield's government?
It wasn't required that it should be, it was a person from Town of Springfield, and this is what, at that time, the Airport Commission Chair, and at that time Elder Howard Teale recommended, so.
This is just a citizen from Springfield, and now we're also being asked to appoint a governmental representative?
And we don't have to accept it. Yes, Emily?
I think Dan said something, but I, I misheard it. Can he repeat what he said before? You, you had said something when the mayor and Susan were talking, or not? Oh, I thought you said something.
Um, my only point was that this is a representative of the Town of Springfield, and this is an advisory committee, and they are gonna report to the Airport Commission. The Airport Commission will then bring their recommendations to the council.
Okay.
And how the decision-making will go, and, you know, we want to try to work with our, our neighbors, and to have them on an advisory committee, I don't see that as a bad thing. But again, you know, we've, this committee has grown and grown, and I understand Susan's frustration, and that's why part of my motion is, this would be the last appointment. We'd not open it up for anything more. No more letters.
Yep. I have no, no issues with that, so. So, any other questions or comments?
So, this would bring a total of twelve, correct? Because we're at eleven right now? Okay. Are we concerned at all about, maybe Dan, you would know about it, if it's a uneven number of individuals on that advisory board, or advisory committee?
I, as far as quorum, it does, it makes it more difficult with quorum, doesn't it?
It's more difficult with quorum. You can have tie votes.
Again, that, that is true, and that, that would be something to look at, but again, uh, it's advisory.
Yep.
And we, and we have seen from other subcommittees, a recommendation comes up to the common council, which is there was a tie vote. We, so we basically have no definitive recommendation, and as Dan says, this isn't actually first coming to the common council. It's first coming to Airport Commission
Yep.
and then here.
Yep.
So, if there's a tie vote, so be it.
I think they have to basically provide the input. I don't even know if they have, gonna be voting in any case, so.
Good, good point, too.
Yes. Okay, all those in favor of the motion that this is the last appointment of this committee, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
The motion passes. So, the next one is the confirmation of mayor's recommended council appointment to the city committees.
Move approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Susan?
Okay, I will be resigning from the LNO committee. This is so that I can do my duties as president, pro tem.
Okay.
Eliminates any quorum issues with being on LNO.
So, what do you, well, you can resign it, and then at that time, I will appoint somebody else, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So, all this in favor of the motion to, as the confirmation of the mayor's recommended to the council appointment, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. Now, the confirmation of mayor's recommended city's appointments to the city committees.
Motion to approve the mayor's recommended citizen appointments.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I get a, sorry, go ahead, please. I, I just had a, a quick question, and forgive my ignorance, I'm, I'm brand new to, on the Airport Commission. It looks like there's a new person, Cynthia Richen, from the Town of Middleton.
Yeah.
But she is, um, uh, the, the term is, she's filling a, a vacant term through a duration of twenty-twenty. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yep, yep.
Okay, got it. So, so her term would be only twenty-seventeen, twenty-one. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, Susan?
Uh, I want to express a concern for this policy that you've adopted of allowing, of not allowing a citizen to serve on more than two committees.
Okay, that's understandable.
We have had, and the one I'm specifically thinking about, is Kurt Paulson on Workforce Housing Commission. I mean, Middleton is extremely lucky to have very qualified individuals and very knowledgeable individuals about this, and I have a problem with us not taking advantage of this.
He will, I talked to him, he will still attend the meetings, and we have, yes, he's quite happy with it, so. Okay, any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, I have one question, again, going back to the, to the Airport Commission. I'm still somewhat confused as to if all the people that are going off's terms are, are over.
They are over based on this official document, which was approved by the city council in May twenty-eighteen, May twenty-seventeen, May twenty-sixteen. Three years and it all.
I, I, I'm not sure that, that document. Lori?
Yes.
You please?
My concern here is, I don't want to just, you know, if somebody has, has time left on their appointment, I'm not sure that we can just
Okay, so I would just
About them resigning, or
Yeah, let me say that
Are you speaking of Tyler, Tyler Noel?
Is he?
Yeah. So, he did serve, just finished a three-year term, but when we went back in the history of all the terms, I kinda screwed him up when I was, when we were re, refilling up people's terms, so we left his term as it should be. We, the eighteen to twenty-one, I think it is. Is that what it is on there?
I think so.
So, we kinda corrected it there, but he is just finishing a three-year term.
He's finishing a three-year term, okay. Alright, thank you.
So, we just, the next person will just be a two-year, and then
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dan.
Just one. Did he get a, did he get a certificate of appointment showing that his term was ending this year? Or don't you do that with committee members?
No, he had to apply, and he applied, so.
No, but
Okay, yes, yes.
Some communities issue certificates that show what the term is, and if it said it was expiring at a later date, that would be important to note.
I think initial term said it was expiring this year, and then we just fixed it down a little bit.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the mayor's appointment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The motion passes unanimously. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, guys. Great job.